I'd like to call to order the Village Westmont Board meeting on October 25, 2018. It's six o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry is not here, but I believe he'll be arriving.
He'll be late.
Late because he has parent-teacher conferences. Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
And trustee Nero.
Will not be here.
Okay, will be absent tonight.
Would everybody... Oh, she's got more.
Manager May.
Here.
Attorney Ziminek.
Here.
And Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and the first item is open forum. This is the opportunity for someone to talk to the board for an item not on the agenda. Seeing no requests, I'll close open forum, move on to reports. I'd like to call a Communications Director, Larry McIntyre up at podium, give a couple updates for the...
Everybody. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna put a picture here on the overhead. This is an image of last year, when a group of our host families for our student exchange program met our Taiwanese exchange students up at O'Hare when they arrived last year for the first student exchange that we had with them, and that's gonna be coming up again. I got an update. Originally, we thought they were coming on Saturday. They're actually coming in on Friday, November 9. And so, you might wanna mark your calendars. We're gonna try to schedule their welcome dinner for Saturday, the 10th. We're working on those details, but that's the date that is kind of open for all parties involved, and we'll be getting you an update on that. But, once again, the students will be here for two weeks around the timeframe of Thanksgiving. They'll be here to celebrate Thanksgiving with their host families, and then they'll celebrate holidays and be part of the parade and all that, so we're looking forward to another successful exchange.
And their arrival date again?
It's gonna be Friday, November 9. And so, they usually are... That plane usually comes in around 9:00 PM, and so, we'll go up there with a couple buses and pick them up and then bring them back to Westmont. And so, a couple other items I can talk about...
Hey.
Oh, sure.
Because of the way this thing is timing now.
Sure.
The following weekend will be the kickoff for holidays and the brunch.
Right.
So, if you can give me a head count, I'll get to see that you... For the host families and for these kids, we'll see that you get tickets for that.
Thank you so much, and I know that was well appreciated last year. Not only the... It's no longer pancake breakfast, it's the lion's brunch.
It's the lion's brunch.
But, they also participated in the tree decorating that day, so it was a full day of fun for them. Definitely, I'll get those numbers to you.
Good.
The next item here, 100th Anniversary Committee. We just had a meeting prior to this meeting and just reaffirmed all of our plans. We're gonna celebrate our 97th anniversary on Thursday, November 8, so that's two weeks from tonight, at 5:30 PM. It's gonna be part of the Admin Finance Committee meeting. The goal is to have all of that ceremony wrapped up in time for the 6:00 PM Village Board meeting. And so, we're looking forward to revealing several things, but another... The next installment of the historical mural, so, from Fannie Moore.
We debated having a separate meeting for it, but it was just easier to make it... Just commit to an agenda item on Admin Finance.
And then, the next item, and this is kind of part of the 100th Anniversary Committee. We announced recently that the Westmont is the Bestmont contest. If you recall, the last several years, we've had historical essays from the kids, as well as just passionate essays, kids talking about why they love Westmont and things like that. In this particular case, the Westmont is Bestmont contest is more of an artistic expression contest. So, kids can come forth with whatever medium they choose. So, they can write a song, they can write a poem, they can make a video, they can do a painting. And it's recently been launched, but some of the kids who were behind this are gonna show up on the 8th to promote this additionally, and the contest will go through January. And then, our thought is hopefully, the award winners will be announced during the annual Westmont Awards Dinner. And so, all that information's online, and that's all I have at the moment for that.
Tomorrow morning, it's the State of the Village at Tico on 63rd Street. Contact the Chamber if you're still interested, if you haven't contacted them yet, for a ticket. And I have to compliment, Larry just walked out. The Chamber and Westmont Special Events for their Wicked Fest this past weekend. It was extremely well-run, and it got extremely windy, but it was... Everybody had a great time, and I see more and more families up and down Cass Avenue over the years. So, thank you for running that event, and we'll move on to Clerk Simmski.
I just wanna... I have a couple announcements. The Holidays Co-Drive starts November 1st. There are two drop-off locations, the Library and the Park District. You can still vote for your favorite scarecrow now until October 31st, so please get on the website, Chamber website, and vote. And the Holiday Fun Fair, which is always great for the kids, is at the Westmont Park District, 75 East Richmond, from 4:30 to 7:30. And while we're on this subject, could we have our Acting Chief, Gruen, come up and talk about trick-or-treat hours?
Safety.
Yeah.
So, next week, we have Halloween. Besides being the two years of me being Deputy Chief, it's also a night for kids to go out and collect candy. But, we... Our suggested hours are from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And if you go into the Village website, under the Police header, there's a banner that has the hours on there. If you click on that banner, there also is some Halloween safety tips, kind of a long list. Won't go through it all, but if you can kinda go through those, it kinda gives you general safety tips for trick-or-treating Halloween.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And last, but not least, there are still packets available. If anybody's interested in running for the Village trustee or the Library trustee, please come in and pick one up if you're interested, and don't forget to vote. If you don't vote, don't complain. You only have the right to complain if you take yourself to the polls and vote, so...
Can I add on to that, too? I believe early voting here in this area can be done at Downers Grove, Village Hall, and also at Yorktown Shopping Center.
Right.
So, there's two locations, and I do know that somebody... Linda, was it you that mentioned that there was one day when 200 people went through Downers Grove?
Wow.
For early voting? So, there's some generation of votes. If you wanna beat the lines, vote early.
And finally, the signs should not be in the parkway, folks. If I see signs in the parkway, they're coming out. So, just be aware that I drive around and see them.
She does.
They're out, gone, so...
And again...
That's it, thank you.
Clerk Simmski's our local election official.
Right.
And a parkway. She's... She doesn't like signs in the parkway.
And that's her parkway.
I'll go to trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recap. The Wicked West Fest that was held over the weekend was enjoyed by a lot of people, and if our Communications Director would step up and...
I'll just quickly...
Did you have some information?
Yeah, I do, and I also... We took quite a few photos, and then, a lot of folks know who Roxanne Ingstrom is here in town. She's an excellent photographer, and she sent us a bunch of photos. Those are all online, and so, people can check out all the fun that we had. But, we had the pumpkin-smashing extravaganza, and so, this is like a crossover event, not only part of Wicked West Fest, but it is also tied into the Environmental Improvement Commission, you know, to promote pumpkin composting. But, I would say this year might have been our best year for pumpkin-smashing. One, the people really got into the decorating of the pumpkins. So, here you see the police and fire and their entries. And I can announce the winners officially now. Bob Fleck from the Park District won the men's competition, and Heather...
A kid's pumpkin.
And then...
He threw a little pumpkin.
Yeah, he cheated.
But, he's little.
And then, Heather Booth from the Library won the women's competition. And then, Jason Ingstrom won the wookie competition, because Chewbacca showed up this year and went up there and threw one. Anyway, they're all gonna be here at the next meeting, two weeks from now. And we also had a costume contest, and that was a lot of fun as well, so, a lot of things happened.
Good.
And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with the pumpkin-smashing, to follow that up, the Environmental Improvement Committee is having a pumpkin composting event on November 3 from 9:00 noon at the library. So, you can bring your old pumpkins up there, and they'll compost them for you at the library. And then, I did also wanna talk about another Environmental Improvement Committee venture was the bulb-smashing that we did in conjunction with the Police Department shredding event. And I wanna say that we had probably 30 residents take advantage of that. They were glad that the community was doing something like that. And then, ongoing conversation, now we're able to open up the bulb recycling. They opened it up to the... Director Ramsey opened it up to the library, and he's going to touch base with the schools. They can contact him and make arrangements for the schools if they have extra old light bulbs around, that they'll take them off their hands, but it works. The machine works great. Their staff is trained in how to run them through the machine, and it was well-received. So, we'll have that available for various agencies, as well as local businesses. They can make arrangements through Mike Ramsey. So, that was tremendous, and the EIC is gonna be thrilled with the success of that. And then, just one more note on the shredding event for the Police Department. I wanted to thank the company, is Doc U. Shred, and the person is Todd Burrell, who made the arrangements to put his staff there, his truck there, and he actually came out and helped unload, you know, and he helped unload some vehicles, and there was a great group of volunteers there, and it was a successful event for them. And again, it was, you know, much-needed, and it raised some money for Special Olympics. It pained me a little bit when they said they were about $800 short of their goal, so there's still time if they wanna see the Deputy Chief. There's still time to donate to Special Olympics, so that, you know, they work so hard to try to get the name on the back of that shirt. I hate to see them be that little bit short. So, you can see Deputy Chief Gruen, and he's gladly gonna take donations for the remainder of that. It's something that people wanna do, and that's all.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Addington.
Yes, sir, a couple of things, thank you. First one, again, it's just to re-mention that on the 18th of November is kind of the kickoff for holidays. There'll be the Craft Fair and the gym at the Community Center, the decorating of the trees that surround Veterans Memorial Park, and then, the Alliance Club will be doing their holiday brunch that morning. So, you can get tickets from... At the Park District or from any of our Alliance Club members, or just buy them at the door. And the only other thing I have today is just to remind everyone that next meeting, which is the 8th, I will be presenting the three winners of the peace poster contest from our town, the parents, and the winners will be here to show off their art, and then, those three go on to the district competition, which will be later that month. So, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump over to trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I went to the Wicked West Fest this weekend, and my first time. I have to apologize, I have never been there, and what a great event. So, hats off to the special events, Chamber, everyone who is involved with that. The weather kinda changed it there at the last minute, but really, what a great event. And as always, we encourage everyone to shop, dine, and discover Westmont. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Quick, I end... I'm gonna end up with trustee Guzzo. She's got a bunch of information.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, yes, I do have a lot to report this evening. Prior to this meeting, we had our Public Safety Committee meeting. I wanna congratulate our promotion on the Fire Department to Lieutenant. There were numerous team accommodation awards, lifesaving awards. There were service awards for the Police Department, congratulations to them as well. Numerous, numerous things that we talked about. Our next meeting will be next year. We do not have the meeting dates published yet, but as soon as they become available, let everybody know. Congratulations to the Fire Department. Woo-hoo, caskets on cask, great job. I wanna say congratulations, you guys pulled it off. So, that was... It was really a nice, nice event. For the Police Department, National Drug Takeback Day is this Saturday, October 27. The Police Department is partnering with Mariano's on 63rd Street. The drug takeback program is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Please keep in mind, they will not take creams, and they will not take EpiPens or anything that has a needle on them. Last year, there... Or the last drug takeback, there were 255 pounds collected. It is a great, great opportunity. If you've got those unwanted expired drugs, please dispose of them properly. And then, the Fire Department, again, we had the 95th Anniversary Celebration on October 13, and I'm gonna invite the Chief and Jenny Babiar to come on up for a special presentation. And I have also been asked by Larry McIntyre. It was my privilege to speak at the Fire Department's open house. For those of you who don't know, my father was Frank Johannick. He probably served the Westmont Fire Department as Fire Chief for 1967, retiring in January 93. My dad was on the Fire Department 43 years. And it was a great privilege for me, because I got the opportunity to talk about the history of the Fire Department through the Fire Chief's daughter's eyes. Growing up, it was just an amazing experience. So, my little synopsis here is gonna be from the late 1960s, as I was a little one, through January 1993, when my dad retired. I remember there were bells in the closet that would go off when there was a fire call. There was a siren on top of the Village Hall that would go off, and they would know that they had to fire call... Had a fire call, and they had to go to the station. The volunteers had a blue light they had on their dashboard in their cars, and they would plug it into the cigarette lighter, and you would see it going around, and you knew they had a call, 'cause you'd see these cars with these little blue lights going down to the fire station. Then, the bells were replaced with something that was called the Pletron. It was a set of tones, it was probably the size of a good-sized toaster, and that would go off, and you would hear the tones, and you would know if it was the Westmont Fire Department or the Downers Grove Fire Department. It got to the point where I knew what tones were going off for which fire department, 'cause you heard them so often. It was just great, it was a great opportunity. Station 1 was actually located here, this was the site of the old Village Hall. There was one, three, three bays downstairs that held an ambulance and an engine. And then, Station Number 2 was originally built where now our police fire facility is, on North Cass Avenue. EMA was amazing as well. They first started out as civil defense, and then, they were renamed ESDA, and I wanna say kudos to them. Fundraisers for the Fire Department, scrap drives, Fire Department dances, pancake breakfast. They had a paramedic referendum, so that's what our current paramedic program is today. And I just have to tell you, I think our Fire Department and all of our village departments are amazing, and I just wanna say kudos to you guys, you did a great job. And thank you for letting me be a part of it.
What are they gonna do now?
They've got something very special. Jenny Babiar painted this in honor of the Fire Department's 95th anniversary. It is amazing.
Thanks, Mayor, but Jenny did for us here, and she took a lot of, you know, some of our history, and with all that you've had. Just talk a little bit about that. We were established in 1923, and we had a Fire Marshal in '23 to '24, another Fire Marshal from '24 to '25, and our first Fire Chief was in 1925. You know, so, we're... We've since worked out, we got the two Fire Marshals' names, I'll get those to Jenny, and we'll get those added on here to complete this. And that'll be all the Chief Officers then, that in the 95 years of the history of the Fire Department that led Westmont Fire Department, so...
This was the first engine, and that's the current engine, '83.
Yep.
Wonderful.
All done.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any board members see an item? Seeing none, I'd ask manager May to read, please.
First on the consent agenda is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held October 11, 2018. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 13, in the amount of $2,016,267.18. We have two purchase orders. First one is JK Enterprises, in an amount of $156,369.11. It's a replacement of a dump truck. Second purchase order is Public Safety Direct, $61,893, and that represents the changeover, the changeover of equipment for squad cars into new vehicles. That brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 13 to $2,234,529.29. We have one community event, being 2018 Westmont Holidays. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Holidays Committee for the 2018 Holidays Opening Ceremony and Ugly Sweater 5K on November 24, 2018. The request includes permit, amplified sound in the downtown business district near Westmont Center from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, closure of West Quincy Street from Cass Avenue to Lincoln from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, closure of East Quincy from Cass Avenue to Wilmette from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, closure of North Linden from Norfolk to Chicago Avenue for a parade staging, that would only be between 4:00 PM and 5:00 PM, and then, close several sections of streets between Burlington Avenue and Trobey, west of Cass Avenue from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM for the Ugly Sweater 5K, per the included map. Last on the consent agenda is a proclamation, 2018 Proclamation, Fairness and Equality. Board to approve a proclamation declaring support of the Fairness and Equity Campaign coordinated in celebration with the December 3, 2018, 200th Anniversary of the State of Illinois. That concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
Motion to approve, Little. Second.
Made in second, on to question.
Does that mean the parade is gonna be starting in a different location and not starting at...
Yeah.
On Trobey now? Is that... Is that why there's new staging area?
Gonna start at Nature's Best, instead of going all the way to the library, yes.
Less to walk, Jenny.
Yeah, less to walk. For those who walk.
I might come this year.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, A, increase in available liquor license. Board to consider an ordinance to increase the number of available Class II liquor license by one for Full Circle Partners DBA, Neat Kitchen and Bar at 246 North Cass Avenue. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulholland.
Heeding Mayor and Village Board, Full Circle Partners has applied for a Class II liquor license, which is for all liquors, with the main business of that being a restaurant. Background view has been conducted, and Full Circle Partners is eligible to receive a Class II liquor license. Full Circle Partners Neat Kitchen and Bar are the new owners and are keeping the same name for the business. Both owners have previous restaurant experience, are looking forward to being in Westmont. With me tonight are the new owners of the Neat Kitchen and Bar, which is John Taylor and its co-partner, Matthew Verdi. A little bit, so I can get it out, and I told them that they were gonna bring it up, but I'll steal their thunder. These gentlemen are the two new owners. None of the previous owners are in association with the business any longer. These are two new owners, have nothing... The new... Previous owners have nothing to do with this ongoing venture. The name remains the same, and they can explain, and ask any questions on that, but I just wanted to make that clear, 'cause that's... Seems to be the main question I keep on getting, are the previous owners going to be involved in this, and they are not. Gentlemen behind me, I'll let them explain, but they do have extensive background, experience in restaurants. In talking and listening to them, I'm very in hearted and enlightened in that for their plans for the future. And one thing I will say, one record on both of them, on John, he's been a businessman, and I'll let him explain more, in Naperville for 24 years, and I'm doing my check with Naperville, and I usually don't reveal this, but this is something he should be very, very proud of. 24 years, his restaurant has not had any liquor violations, which is very, in my mind, very hard for a business to do at today's age. So, with that, I now introduce to you John Taylor and Matt Verdi to talk about their new restaurant, Neat Kitchen and Bar.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for having us, first of all. As you said, I've been in operations in Naperville for 24 years. Started off as a 1,500-square-foot small Italian restaurant, have since moved to a 5,000-square-foot, 200-seat restaurant, extensive catering business, including but not limited to weddings, corporate events, large and small-scale parties, and everything in between. The success for us for the last 23 years, I was told by a customer, one of our first customers, take care of the community, and the community will take care of you. That's proven very true, and we've held that close to our heart for a long time, and that's kinda how we've made our history where we're at. The liquor violation record is congratulatory, and we appreciate that. For me, it's standard business practice. Go within the rules, and you'll have good things coming to you. I can't do this all on my own. This is why Matt is here. I have the business here, the business there. Matt, I'll let him speak for himself, has also extensive background in the restaurant-bar operating business. I'll let him speak on that as well.
Thank you, John. Thank you. As John was saying, I do have plenty of restaurant experience as well. My experience, though, was more on the corporate side. I was with a company called Rock Bottom Restaurants for 10 years. After I left Rock Bottom Restaurants, I joined Darden Restaurants in their Capital Grill Division. I was with them for eight years. I ran the Capital Grill in Rosemont for the last five years. I decided to depart the restaurant industry, and I joined US Foods as a district sales manager. So, I have extensive management and leadership background in the food service and bar industry. The reason we named our company Full Circle Partners is because John and I have known each other since grade school, worked together. After my tour in the Marine Corps, I joined John's restaurant team, left there, went to school, did my own thing in the corporate industry, and we've come full circle now when this Neat opportunity came around. So, that's kind of how we determined the name. We're really looking forward to reopening Neat and contributing to the community. I assure you that there is no relationship or no business with the previous owners. I know that that was and has been something that has been brought up. But, we kept the name, because we felt that there was a good presence as far as social media and a good brand, and we wanted to continue that, just operated a little bit differently than it was operated in the past.
I'll ask the two basic ones, I'm sure everybody else. Menu and when you plan on opening?
So, menu, very similar to what everybody may or may not be familiar with over there. Some, you know, chef-driven, high-end bar food. I guess we like to go all more gastropub-like, some, you know, from appetizers to main courses to salads and everything in between. Did I say that properly?
We did. So, I think that one of the great things about Neat before...
We did. So I think that one of the great things about Neat before was their food. The food was always something that people spoke highly of and what we didn't want to do was, was, was mess with that. So we have retained the chef, very talented individual that we do plan on keeping on staff. And as far as when we plan on opening, our original opening date was, was November 1st. That was an aggressive, an aggressive date set forth. But it's now looking more like the latter part of the first week of November or early part of the second week of November. But definitely by mid-November, we plan to be open and serving the community.
Good.
One thing I mentioned to Matt when I first met him. You see, notice how he's a little bit dressed casualizes from his business, the Capital Grill. Is he happy not wearing a suit anymore? And he's very happy.
Other questions?
No, I just want to compliment them that they were at the restaurant day of the trick-or-treat trail, Westfest, passing out candy to kids. And I thought that was wonderful that you took the time to come to Westmont to get involved in that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
They haven't, I'm sorry. They haven't introduced to their new neighbor across the alley. Couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity for the four of us to sit and talk for, or stay and talk for a while.
So I've been asked by several people, like you get these questions around town, but so I guess why the neat name and then how does that work? Are they not registered with the state of Illinois or did you purchase that name? Or how does all that go about?
Sure. We did purchase the intellectual property and the brand from them. So there is a, so that's how we, how we were able to keep the same name. And as far as why keeping the name neat, again, we felt that the brand was, was strong. There may have been some things that needed to be, you know, cleaned up a bit, but that's, that's what John and I are here to do and then that's why we decided to keep the name.
It was going to be real expensive to replace the awning too, so we figured.
It was cheaper to buy the name than buy the new awning?
Yeah, exactly.
Very good. Very good.
Other?
We're just looking forward to.
Yeah. Thank you for having us.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Haddington to approve.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. On to question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Haddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Look forward to coming to the new Neat.
Us as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
New business B, 700 Oakmont Lane zoning variance and site plan. Board to consider ordinance approving the following request from the Ryan Companies US Incorporated regarding the property located at 700 Oakmont Lane, Westmont, Illinois for the following. One, zoning code variance request to allow parking within the front yard setback in the OR Office Research District. Two, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum number of wall signs permitted in the OR Office Research District. And three, site and landscaping plan approval. And I think I'm going to ask our village planner Savoy if he would come up to the podium to give a little additional information and introduce our guest.
Good evening, everyone. For some of you, this isn't the first time I've been before you. Some of you may remember with a previous firm, I served you as your TIF consultant setting up both the downtown and the 63rd Cass districts. So it's a pleasure to be back and thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, we have a project that I think it's safe to say everyone from staff through the Economic Development Committee and now the Plant Commission have supported pretty strongly. The Ryan Companies has brought to us a significant improvement to a long vacant property. They're turning it into a Class A project and not only doing internal work, but exterior work and improving the overall project for the community. As a part of that and as a part of the development process to make it a more marketable site, there was several things that they had to do to the project that caused the need for some variance requests and also changes to their site and landscape plan. The front yard parking variance along Oakmont, I believe, is required in large part, as I understand it, and Kurt will follow up to clarify this, but in large part to provide more parking near the front entrance to basically make it better for the tenants, that more people are located in the appropriate location. So that was the principal reason for that change. And again, Oakmont, as I remember it, is a short dead-end street, not a lot of impact in terms of variation history. The other one for the sign was simply because there's going to be a potential multi-tenant building. They wanted the opportunity to have better visibility and the sign that they're going to be adding will be facing east toward Route 83. And again, the commission felt that that was a reasonable variation as well. The only other change, and it is significant in terms of the impact on the site, is the fact that the new user Ryan, or the developer Ryan and the anticipated new users, which we don't know about exactly, but the experience with Class A is that our offices generally is what we're finding, or they are finding, and I've read enough to know this is not untypical, that the demand, interestingly enough, for parking and office developments is actually going up in large part because we're now having more people per square foot than we used to have. This is the result, as you know, of people spending less time in the office. I read a statistic that 75%, 50% or 75% of people work at least one day at home. So, and the advent of WeWork spaces and co-sharing spaces and all that, meaning there's more people coming and going, less need for physical space, but more people coming to a site at one time, that's driving parking demand up. So the unusual thing is we have a proposal that ends up needing 133 more spaces than what our ordinance actually requires. And not that that's a bad thing at all. The downside on this site is that it essentially required the substantial modification of a large landscaped area on the north end. And we initially had some concern, obvious, for obvious reasons, because it has, you know, potential impact on the property to the north. Learned later, after we put forward some ideas in our report, that actually Kurt and his company had secured an easement agreement with Maze Lake so that the easement agreement is to the benefit of Maze Lake to guarantee that although the landscaped area will be reduced significantly, it will always remain as a landscaped area within, you know, with certain landscape improvements associated with it. So Maze Lake has that guarantee of, if you will, no further improvements without their, of course, approval of that. So with that, the commission was willing to, if you will, accept the, the change to the landscaped area with no further, well, with only one really additional comment, the commission did add as a condition to its approval that three, up to three additional landscaped islands be added to the parking row on the north end to kind of break up the long continuous, if you will, asphalt pavement, which actually is not untypical and most communities require that. So that's all I have in terms of summary of the project and if you have any other questions, I guess.
I see. Yeah, Kurt, yes, you want to?
Good evening, Mayor. Village trustees. My name's Kurt Pascoe. I am a real estate developer with Ryan Companies. We've got all sorts of information here tonight to answer any specific questions that you may have on the project, including our full presentation that we gave to the PCC committee a couple of weeks ago. But wanted to start with a little background on Ryan Companies and our plans for the site in general. Ryan is a national, third-generation, family-owned, commercial real estate company. Annually, we do somewhere between $1.5 and $2 billion of volume coast-to-coast. We've got 16 offices, our local offices here in Naperville, just down 88. Of that volume, about half of it is building for ourselves, for developments such as this one. And the other half is building third-party for major clients, you know, Amazon, Wells Fargo, you name them. That's the realm that we work in. So this particular property was one that we purchased in the winter of 2016. And as Khan mentioned, after purchasing that, we approached Maze Lake to make sure that they were aware of our plans and so forth and worked out our agreements with them and started marketing the property to tenants. As Khan also mentioned, one of the great benefits here is location. We're at the east end of the 88 corridor where there is higher demand for office. Folks want to be able to attract talent from the city as well as north and south of 294. And Westmont's at a perfect location to take advantage of that. Secondly, parking ratio. It was mentioned before, but that's absolutely true. We are talking to clients that are asking upwards of seven per thousand for parking, which is what defines today's office trends and what is also differentiates this property from what is available elsewhere in the marketplace. And because of those two things, we're seeing success. Currently, we have a lease with an anchor tenant for the first phase for the western building of this property. And we're excited that with your approvals tonight, we'll have a trailer on-site next week with demolition starting shortly thereafter. That's expecting that our first tenant will be in and operational by third quarter of next year. So that said, we have some renderings. If you have questions about the project itself, everyone's familiar with the location. This would be a rendering taken from the corner of Pasquenelli and Oakmont. So if you're standing in the Papadoas parking lot and looking across that pond, this is what you might get to see next time you go by. And we're really excited about taking that structure and reusing it, but applying new materials, new skin, new mechanical systems and really bringing this forward to be a Class A office development to serve the village for many, many years. That said, if there's any questions about the specific variances, I'm happy to dive into them. Otherwise, answer any others you might have.
Your first tenant, how many employees you think they'll have?
Not sure. The, they're going to take about 70,000 square feet of the first building. And these renderings show about 150,000 square feet total between the two. And as I said, we're responding to parking ranges that are anywhere from five to seven per thousand. So that ratio would fall someplace anywhere from 300 to 500 employees.
Additional comments before John?
Just point out that the ordinance that the board, that's in front of the board to vote on, granting the approvals does include the landscape island requirements. And Mr. Savoy mentioned that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. If the board is in favor of including that condition, it's already in your ordinance. And it requires Ryan Companies to submit a revised landscape and site plan showing those landscape islands so staff has a record to look back on and say, yes, we can give you permits and follow the site plan that shows these islands. So just ask that you resubmit those as soon as you can as a condition to getting demo permits, et cetera.
Certainly. And we're comfortable with that comment.
Any other comments?
You want us to make the motion subject to, or?
It's already in your.
It's in there, so.
Just pointing out. Well, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Haddington to approve.
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second. On to question.
Just, I know, I wasn't sure if it was at the EDC or the Planning and Zoning. You had talked about possibly some underground parking, converting the business, the basement over rather, to some, some actual enclosed parking. Is that still part of the plan?
Yeah. So just to spend a quick moment to show you what's happening. If you look at your screens, you can see this is the property today. We've got three office buildings. They're all stitched together. If you've been in the property, all they're just massive floor plates of office, including the basement. Basement is just data centers and office, no windows. It's not something that's applicable to today's market. What we're proposing to do is we pull this over to show the proposed condition. We're reskining the pond building and just taking out that center one. So that's demolished. And as you continue over, you can see the new western building mentioned. So underneath this center courtyard and underneath this building, there's still old office space and we're converting that to below-grade parking. So we have upwards of 150 executive parking stalls within that building.
Any other comments?
It's beautiful.
Public. I'm looking, anybody from the public? Sure, sir? No? All right. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Haddington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll be looking forward to that trailer out there.
We are too. Thank you.
New business C, health program agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement between the Westmont Fire Department advocates to Bolingbrook Health to allow for the required physicians, physicals of firefighters. And I got Deputy Chief Riley to discuss it.
Thank you, Mayor. The hospital is currently where we're at is Edwards Corporate Health and we're looking to switch to Amita Health in Bolingbrook. Not only will be better for our firefighters for physicals, but it'll be also cost savings to the village.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Haddington to approve.
Motion made in second. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Haddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, merchant services agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement for merchant card processing services with Payment Spring. Finance Director Parker.
Our current software vendor is no longer utilizing the same merchant card processor that we have used in the past. Therefore, we need to change vendors.
Do I have a motion?
Motion by Haddington to approve.
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second to approve. Questions?
Yeah, what the heck is a Payment Spring?
Payment Spring is the name of the company.
Ah, okay.
It's to process credit cards so that people can continue to pay online and pay with a credit card at the window.
And there's a cost to us?
There are costs to us, so we do pay them a percentage of what people pay.
Is it comparable to the one we?
Yeah, it's pretty similar.
Yes, okay.
It's pretty competitive, isn't it, Spencer, for what they're doing? I've been surprised. I've noticed lately, a lot of villages don't accept credit cards. Like, it's really a nice feature that we have that, that a lot of villages don't, so it's a nice thing.
There are also a lot of villages that if people choose to pay by credit card, they pass on the credit card fee to the customers and we have chosen not to do that historically.
That was going to be something that I was going to bring up after we get past this, about that discussion. Because as with the barbecue events and some other things, we've started because of the convenience to the teams and things, but we, yeah, we, there's also a fee, but we pass that on. So you pay a couple of dollars extra if you're going to use your credit card, but it's easier than mailing in checks and everything else. It's actually easier on us as the person offering the service because then I'm not running around to the banks. We just get a report from the, from the server, the credit card company, that this one, this one, this one, and it's all done. So, you know.
I'm sure rules are different for every vendor, but some of them have strict rules that you can't pass that service fee on to the customer. It's spelled out in the contract.
I didn't know that.
That's part of your agreement when you accept that, that you can't move forward, so.
This agreement is still undergoing some fine tuning. We sent some changes to Payment Spring, who passed it on to the end bank who's out of Omaha, Nebraska. And we're waiting to hear a final response back whether they agree to all of the changes. So the ordinance that's in front of you gives the Finance Director and Village Attorney authority to finalize the terms of the contract. It's things like they have to, the village would have to comply with the Illinois Local Government Prompt Payment Act. They didn't have that language in there. Any disputes currently state that they have to be resolved according to Nebraska law with jurisdiction in Nebraska. We don't want to be dragged into a lawsuit in Nebraska, so we try to change that. Changing the term from an automatic three-year term to a one-year term with successive one-year renewals and some changes regarding not only the village's ability to terminate it, but if the bank were to try and terminate it, they'd have to give some advance notice to the village in time to cure if there's a default. So pretty standard stuff. I think we'll be able to get it resolved, but I wanted to let you know those are out there.
Additional comments? Anybody seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Haddington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Did we miss anything? Anybody got anything to comment on?
Mayor, just one thing.
Yes.
I just want to comment that last night, three of us plus the deputy fire chiefs were.
were able to attend the Hunter Club dinner last night in Lyle and they honored a firefighter for saving a life out there. And just a nice event. We've been going to that for a number of years and, you know, God bless the police and fire departments.
Thank you. Seeing no other information, I need a motion to adjourn to an executive session to discuss pending litigation, to discuss Illinois Cafe and Service Company, LLC versus Westmont pursuant to Section 2, C-12 of the Open Meetings Act. Any other?
Second, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second, adjourn executive session. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Haddington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Okay, after the executive session, there'll be no further business and I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.